When I switched back and forth, he kept blocking me. I was like, that won't happen ever again. I learned my lesson once.
We're live.
We call this meeting to order. For all that care to, please stand for an opening prayer and pledge of allegiance. Let us pray. We come before you with grateful hearts, thankful for the opportunity to serve the people of Republic. We ask for your guidance and wisdom as we make decisions that affect our community. Grant us clarity, unity, and integrity in all that we do. Help us to lead with compassion, humility, and a spirit of cooperation. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, thank you everyone for being here this evening. We are going to start off tonight with mayor's announcements. Our first announcement for tonight, I will appoint Chris Crosby to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a four-year term. That was the last of the mayor's announcements. At this time, we're going to move on to citizens' participation. This is an opportunity for citizens to speak directly to council on matters that are not listed on tonight's agenda. So out of respect to everyone who is giving their time here this evening, we ask that you keep comments concise, focused, and that we maintain a mutual focus. So, we are opening citizens' participation. We've got three minutes for you. Mr. Mark Stiles, could you please come forward? And if we could get you to state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Mark Stiles, 207 East Wilson Street. Good evening, members of council and Mr. Mayor. My issue that I want to speak about tonight is a couple of maintenance issues as we go out on North Main Street. One is just north of the elementary school. I've got a picture here of the grass growth. It's about two feet taller than the trash can. It's an insect and animal control issue. It just invites nuisances as well as it is part of the gateway to our city, and it's, to me, an embarrassment that we've allowed that to get that overgrown. The second property is just north of Lapis, directly across from Lapis, which is just a little bit further north. I think it's in the city limits at this point, based on the city limit sign. It is just as high as the previous picture that I've shown you. And I don't know if it's the property owner's responsibility, being in the ditch line, or if it's the city's, but I just ask that it be taken care of.
Thank you very much for coming here this evening, Mr. Stiles. So is that something Public Works can verify?
Yes.
So, my apologies, Mr. Stiles, that's something, we'll have Public Works take a look at that and verify whether that's in the city or outside of the city and try to get some clarification on that issue for you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was the only one I had signed up tonight for citizens' participation. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that wants to participate in citizens' participation? Seeing that there is none, I'm going to close citizens' participation at this time. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. I welcome the council to ask any questions or comments about items number two through four on the consent agenda. Seeing that there is none, I need a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda.
Motion.
Aye.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. Moving on to board, commission, and committee schedules. Our next city council meeting will be August the 5th, 2025. Board of Adjustment meeting will be August the 7th, 2025. We have a planning and zoning meeting on August the 11th, 2025. We have a city council work session August the 26th, 2025. And we have another city council meeting on August the 26th, 2025. There is no old business or tabled items for this evening, so we're going to move on to new business and first reading of ordinances. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 25-22 by title only, please.
Motion, second.
Got a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council vacating approximately 6,035 square feet of right-of-way located between the common area and Lot 1 of Mason Ridge Phase 1, VACA 25007.
Thank you, Laura, and we've got Mr. Ruiz here this evening to give us an overview.
Good evening. Patrick Ruiz, Associate Planner. So a request to vacate a portion of Will Street right-of-way and Mason Ridge Phase 1 has been made. The requested vacation is approximately 6,000 square feet in total. At the time of infrastructure construction, the street was not constructed within the subject right-of-way. The street is also not anticipated to be built out to the west due to the natural constraints of the floodplain to the west, as you see on the map. If approved, the vacated right-of-way would go back to the common area that is maintained and owned by the HOA of the subdivision. So based on this information, city staff recommends approval of the requested street vacation.
Thank you, Mr. Ruiz. Do we have any questions, comments from city council? Doesn't look like we have any questions or comments tonight. Do we have any citizens' comments this evening on this topic? I don't have anyone signed up this evening. Seeing that there are none, in pursuant to 3.10F of the charter, staff is requesting the second reading of this ordinance during tonight's meeting. I need a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill 25-22 to be held during tonight's meeting.
Motion, second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. Moving on to item number six, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 25-23 by title only, please.
Motion, second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council vacating approximately 1,100 square feet of utility easement on Lot 1 of Mason Ridge Phase 1, VACA 25008.
Thank you, Laura, and we've got Mr. Ruiz here to give us an overview.
Yep, so this vacation is in general same vicinity as the previously one presented, and this is a request to vacate a 10-foot utility easement on Lot 1. The reference utility easement is currently unused for the intended purpose of utilities, and there's no plans for extension of our city utilities like water sewer. We also confirmed with the other utility companies that serve the subdivision, and they don't have any plans for utilities to be serving within this easement. If approved, the vacated utility easement associated development rights would be given back to the property owner of Lot 1. So based on this information, city staff is also recommending approval of this utility easement vacation.
Thank you, Mr. Ruiz. Do we have any questions, comments from city council? Seeing that there is none, we don't have anyone from, signed up to speak this evening on it, so... Pursuant to 3.10F of the charter, staff is requesting the second reading of this ordinance during tonight's meeting. I need a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill 25-23 to be held during tonight's meeting.
Motion, second.
Got a motion and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. Moving on to item number seven. I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 25-24 by title only, please.
Motion, second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council approving amendment of the zoning classification of approximately 18.49 acres located at the 900 block of Colorado Avenue from Frisco Square Plan Development District, PDD, to amended Frisco Square Plan Development District, PDD 25001.
Thank you, Laura, and we've got Mr. Tabor here this evening to give us an overview.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chris Tabor, Principal Planner. Modern Tractor and Supply, Inc. has applied for an amendment to the zoning classification from Frisco Square Plan Development District to amended Frisco Square Plan Development District. The subject site is 18.49 acres of an existing parcel currently undeveloped at the 900 block of Colorado. It is currently zoned as part of the Frisco Square Plan Development District, and this PDD allows for a mix of residential types. The current existing zoning allows for 8.45 acres of multifamily R3 for a total of 147 maximum possible dwellings at a density of 17.4 units per acre. It also allows for 3.3 acres of single-family residential, R1H, for a total of 19 lots at 6.22 dwellings per acre, and then 5.03 acres of green space. The applicant is requesting to amend the zoning to make a change to allow for the use of 75 single-family residential lots. These would be a specialized zoning district as outlined by the PDD. The setbacks would be in line with the requirements of currently adopted R1 zoning districts. The front setback would be 25 feet, the back setback is 25 feet. Six feet in between houses as an interior side setback, and then side-street setbacks on a local street would be 15 feet. Side-street setbacks on a collector are 20 feet. The lot size they're asking for is a minimum area of 5,500 square feet and a minimum width of 50 feet with a minimum depth of 110 feet. The proposed development plan is consistent with the City of Republic's adopted ordinances as well as the goals and objectives of the currently adopted comprehensive plan and land use plan. The subject site is surrounded by existing vacant commercial zone properties and developed or vacant residential zone properties and uses. North across Colorado Avenue is Frisco Square Village PDD, which is a mixed use of multifamily residential. To the northwest is more of Frisco Square PDD, a mixed use of commercial and residential, directly adjacent to a local commercial zoning. And then to the south is high-density, single-family residential, R1H. To the east is the Sunset Landing PDD, known as Monte Cristo, which is a mixed use of single-family and zero-lot line homes. And then to the west across Illinois Avenue is General Commercial C2. The subject site is in proximity to the City of Republic's sanitary sewer and water service with existing points of connection available. The water system, the existing lift station, and the water treatment plant have sufficient capacity to serve the development at full build. The project would create four local streets and make one new connection to South Colorado Avenue and one new connection to South Illinois Avenue, both of which are collector-class streets. The applicant was required to submit a traffic impact study to evaluate the additional trips that this development would generate. The traffic impact study was then reviewed by builds and MoDOT staff to determine if any improvements were needed, and no improvements were determined needed at full build out of the property. The development plan contains three areas designated for stormwater retention detention, designed to accommodate the stormwater that is generated by the development's impervious surface. The location of these areas is in the northeast corner, the southwest corner, and the center of the development area as necessitated by the topography of the parcel. The subject area does not contain a special flood hazard area or floodplain. The subject parcel does contain two identified sinkholes, which have been limited to common lots. All construction will be in accordance with Section 410.700 of the City of Republic's adopted ordinances, sinkholes and karst features, where no building would be allowed, no construction or building would be allowed within a 30-foot setback of the mapped sinkholes. The development plan proposes that those sinkholes and the 30-foot no-build area be directed onto a common lot so as not to be on any homeowner's property. The next step in the property of development of the subject parcel upon a favorable rezoning outcome would be an application for an infrastructure permit. At that point, the exact details and placement of connection points for that infrastructure will be determined. Staff would also like to note that the initial publication of this rezon had an expanded legal description that has been pared down since then. The original published legal description contains the entire geographical area of the new description. Staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, Mr. Tabor. Do we have any questions, comments from city council? Mr. Harder.
Yeah, so this is going to be getting rid of the multifamily, correct, and going to the 75 single-family dwellings, is that correct?
Correct. The existing zoning is the one that allows for multifamily. The new zoning that they're asking for tonight is single-family only.
Okay, and another question, kind of related but not, is there any problems with detention and water runoff from Monte Cristo and that other subdivision? Do we have any problems with those detentions, whereas if this is overflow, it will go into those detentions as well because this is going to be a higher area, everything going?
So at this point, the city does not require a stormwater study or any hydrology work to be done. You know, in most cases, what you have is a developer who does some amount of that preliminary work so that they know if the project's going to work or not, but we don't require that until the infrastructure design phase.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Fields.
Just let everyone know there were seven citizens that came to speak at the P&amp;Z last night on this, if you want to go watch it.
Was it a mix of in favor, against, or?
They were pretty much all spoke against it.
Spoke against it, so definitely, city council, we need to make sure that we watch that P&amp;Z meeting as well. Do we have any additional questions, comments from city council? Mr. Gerke.
Mr. Tabor, so compared to the adjacent subdivisions, similar density, less, more, how would you?
So the density for this subdivision would be 4.05 units per acre, and the required density for R1H, which is to the south, is 6.22, so it's a lower density. The lots are smaller, as you can obviously see, but what we're talking about is we're accounting for undevelopable area. And so by making those lots smaller and making larger common areas, you know, you have a lower density.
If it was fully able to be developed, the density would be also be a lot more, but if you take the whole surface area in, it's...
Yes, when we evaluate the density of a rezon, we evaluate it as the full acreage to be developed at the time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gerke. Do we have any other questions, comments from city council? Thank you, Mr. Tabor. Remember, this is a first read, so make sure that you get with staff with any questions prior to the next meeting, and definitely take a look at that P&amp;Z meeting. Moving on to item number eight, I need a motion and a second for the first reading of Bill 25-25 by title only, please.
Motion, second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council amending Title I, Government Code, Chapter 130, Municipal Court, Article 131, Municipal Court General Provisions, Section 130.030, Selection of Judge, 130.040, Term of Office, and 130.050, Vacation of Office of the Municipal Code of the City of Republic, Missouri.
Thank you, Laura, and we've got Ms. McCulloch here to give us an overview this evening.
So for this one, we are proposing some changes to the code section, and the changes are outlined in the red line that's attached to the packets. But generally speaking, what we're doing is we're trying to bring the provisions into alignment with what our current practice is. So just in the course of reviewing the code like we do routinely, we noticed that our code provision here in this section that we're proposing changes to is still contemplated, a statutory term of two years for the municipal judges. As the council knows, we've been doing the one-year contracts for municipal judges since before I started here. So we're bringing that into alignment with what the current practice is and the preferences are, which is just for the one-year contracts. So the city isn't bound by the two-year contracts. And then the other provisions, the terms are, the changes, the proposed changes are much more minor, I guess, if you will. They're really just to clarify the duties and obligations of the mayor with respect to selection and appointment of the judge. But substantively speaking, we're not proposing any actual changes to the appointment or selection process, just to clean up and clarify those roles for the mayor.
Thank you, Ms. McCulloch. Do we have any questions, comments from city council? Seeing that there is none, remember, this one is a first read, so make sure that you get with staff with any questions prior to the next meeting. At this time, I'm going to go back to item number eight. Totally my fault, I got lost in my notes and wrote right past our speaker. Mr. Chris Nguyen, I had you for speaking this evening on item number eight.
Yeah, good evening. I wasn't going to fight you on it too much. My name is Chris Nguyen. I'm a civil engineer with CJW Transportation located at 5051 South National Avenue, Suite 7A in Springfield, representing the developer on this. I won't keep you long. There, like the gentleman over here mentioned, there was about five or six citizens last night. It's kind of rare that you have planning and zoning the night before, but it's fresh in our minds. There were five or six citizens, mainly adjacent in the Monte Cristo neighborhood, that spoke against this project for a variety of reasons. You know, some people brought up density, and I think that the main thing to remember here is this is the one time I'll probably come in front of this council and ask for a lesser density than is what is currently approved. I've been in front of you guys many a times. I'm always asking for residential R1 high-density, which allows for 6.22 dwelling units per acre. We're asking for just over four, at 4.05. Currently, there's 147 dwelling units just for apartments alone, plus 19 single-family that are already approved on those properties. We're putting in 75, so less than half of the dwelling units that's been previously approved. So quite a decrease, which means decreased traffic, decreased impact on city utilities, and decreased just overall presence of the developments. You don't got three-story apartments overlooking your backyard. You know, one thing we would note is we do have smaller lots. This piece of property is kind of unique in a way that there's a natural draw that runs through it. There's an detention basin upstream that discharges onto this property. There's two sinkholes. So where we would normally like to just have one centralized detention basin, it's not really possible on this site. We've got three separate detention basins that kind of accept that water as it comes through. So it eats up a lot of the buildable areas. We're asking for smaller lots that are kind of centralized in the buildable areas. So that's how we have the smaller lots, but we have a lesser density than what you're seeing in the adjacent neighborhoods because we're kind of more compact where we can build. So that's kind of the point to the density. Some comments that the neighbors brought up, one gentleman spoke of stormwater that this gentleman here brought up. He says that he does live downstream of Monte Cristo, and he does see what he believes to be more water coming out of that neighborhood than he has seen in the past. You know, I'm not aware of that issue personally. I do know that, you know, we will submit plans. We have three detention basins on this site. They'll be reviewed by the City of Republic's engineers, and will meet applicable code. I mean, that's the best that we can do. You know, we try our best to be mindful of downstream impacts from our water, and, you know, we always meet or exceed codes. So we would expect to do the same thing on this project. A couple people brought up their wildlife. There is an area of trees kind of in the southeast portion of this property. They mentioned there's a lot of songbirds, and they believe that there's an owl there that they've noticed or heard in the evenings. You know, we talked to them after the meeting for 10, 15 minutes just to try and... We don't want to oversell or overpromise what we can do because at the end of the day, it is development. You know, we're going to be putting in roads, sanitary sewer, water. But once we get outside of that right-of-way, it's kind of up to the home builder whether or not they're going to maintain these trees. And I can tell you, if the tree falls, where the home's going to go, the tree's going to go away, but at the same time, mature trees add lot value. I personally like trees. Home builders like trees. People generally buy lots like trees. So, yes, there are mature trees. If it's going to fall in the road or the middle of the home, I could tell you it's probably not going to last, but that's... Our intention is to not disturb any more trees than we can. As far as disrupting the wildlife, you know, staff mentioned that there's not really anything in code, and you could, correct me if I'm wrong, that necessarily goes out of the way to protect wildlife in the City of Republic, but MDNR does have regulations on when we can take down trees because of bats and certain things that we have to do to protect endangered species, so we're always mindful of that. The city staff will require us to make sure that we've got our permitting from DNR, so we will look to protect them. So from my notes, density, wildlife, and stormwater were the main concerns that I got out of that meeting. I feel like, you know, based on, and I hate to be like, well, if you don't approve this, the alternative is three stories apartments, but, I mean, that is currently what is allowable on this, is, you know, 147 apartment units plus 19 residential homes. So we're coming to you asking for 75 homes. I think it's pretty reasonable. And we just, you know, ask for your support. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. Does council have any questions for Mr. Nguyen?
Mr. Mayor. So you're comparing to the previous PDD.
Yeah, the previous PDD, which is the current zoning of the property. So, I mean, you know, if this developer was interested in building apartments, I think at this point, we would just be submitting plans to staff and not even coming in front of this board. I think that you guys wouldn't even see us or hear from us. So, yeah, I'm comparing, you know, what could be versus what we're proposing.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from city council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Nguyen, correct me if I'm wrong, but you have to keep all the water that's on that, that you're receiving, you have to keep that on your land. You can't let it leave your land at a higher rate than it is.
Yeah, so like what city's code says, and it's the same for all of the cities generally. I mean, some people have different equations and ways to calculate that, and there's state laws, but generally, the overall taking from that is we cannot discharge water at a quicker rate than the water's coming off that field. So we look at how fast water's coming off that field, and we have to provide detention to release water at that same rate. And the idea behind that is if it's coming out at five cubic feet per second, and that's what the downstream storm is designed for, is five cubic feet per second, we need to match that or be less. We can't just send 20 and just overpower everything that's downstream. So, yes, generally, we cannot let more out than what is there. I mean, there are some exceptions if you're adjacent to floodplains and stuff, but we won't get into that.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Any additional questions, comments from city council? So again, I apologize for going past you, but it sounds like we had a great discussion, great questions from council.
I just didn't want it to be some, someone's like, well, you didn't open it to public comments, so...
Yes.
We're postponing for a meeting or something.
Thank you for hanging around and not taking off, so I appreciate it very much.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you very much. So we are going to move on to new business, second reading of ordinances. Item number nine, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 25-22 by title only, please.
Motion, second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council vacating approximately 6,035 square feet of right-of-way located between the common area and Lot 1 of Mason Ridge Phase 1, VACA 25007.
Thank you, Laura. Does council have any questions, comments, discussion before moving forward? Seeing that there is none, we will move to final passage. I now need a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 25-22, please.
Motion, second.
Got a motion and a second. Now take a roll call vote on our computers. Motion carries eight zero zero. Moving on to item number 10. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of Bill 25-23 by title only, please.
Motion, second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries eight zero zero. Laura will read the ordinance by title, please.
An ordinance of the city council vacating approximately 1,100 square feet of utility easement on Lot 1 of Mason Ridge Phase 1, VACA 25008.
Thank you, Laura. Does council have any questions, comments, discussion before moving on? Seeing that there is none, we will move on to final passage. I need a motion and a second for the final passage of Bill 25-23... passage of Bill 25-23, please.
Motion. Second.
Got a motion and a second. Now going to take a roll call vote on our computer. Motion carries 800. Moving on to other business and resolutions. Item number 11, 25-R-26, a resolution of the city council appointing new authorized signers for the city's municipal court account with RVest Bank and modifying the process by which the city is to provide notice of any personnel changes affecting such authorized signers. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution 25-R-26, please.
Motion. Second.
Got a motion and a second. We've got Mr. Ford here this evening to give us an overview.
Good evening, Bob Ford, Chief Financial Officer. A bit of background, the Office of State Courts Administrator, affectionately referred to as OSC, is responsible for providing administration, business, and technology support service for all the state courts. While the municipal court bank account is technically an asset of the City of Republic, the only people authorized by OSC to be signers on that account are those employees that are totally and completely dedicated to the court. As an example, I can't be a signer on that account. So what this resolution does, it does two things. One, it changes how we assign signers to the court account. So you remember, last year, we changed how we identified who was gonna be a signer for the city's operating and bond account by going to a role environment as opposed to a name. So we're doing the same thing here. We're moving away from identified individuals as signers to roles being signers. In this case, we are authorizing and recommending we authorize the presiding judge and the municipal court clerk as the authorized signers. And then secondarily, this resolution moves on to basically, in the context of that role, it names David Doran as the presiding judge and Kim Winkler as the municipal court clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Do we have any questions from city council? Questions, comments, concerns?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gurkey.
So then going forward, the main thing would be, it's per role, so if someone knew one of that role, we wouldn't have to come back and get it reapproved, correct?
Correct. So in the event that the judge changes, all I need to do is provide a letter to RVest saying, this is the new judge.
In that role. Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Any additional questions from city council? Questions, comments? Seeing that there is none, as this is a resolution, we can call this immediately for a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 800. Moving on to item number 12, 25-R-27, a resolution of the city council appointing new authorized signer for the city's general operating account and bond proceeds account with RVest Bank. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution 25-R-27, please.
Motion. Second.
Got a motion and a second. We've got Mr. Ford to give us an overview.
Good evening, Bob Ford again, Chief Financial Officer. This resolution is doing nothing but removing the title of Assistant City Administrator, which we no longer have, and it adds the Community Development Director as an authorized role in the signer for the RVest Bank accounts. Staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Do we have any questions, comments, concerns from city council? Mr. Gurkey.
So this is similar role base, so as we, some of these roles may change, or we appoint a new city administrator, we wouldn't have to come back in again?
Correct. Give you a great example. With David's resignation, we've removed him as a signer. When that job gets filled, we'll just send a letter to RVest Bank saying, here's the new city administrator. That new person will be a signer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gurkey. Thank you, Mr. Ford. Any additional questions, city council? Questions, comments? Seeing that there is none, as this is a resolution, we can call this immediately for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 800. Moving on to item number 13, 25-R-28, a resolution of the city council authorizing expenditures for the information technology infrastructure of the new admin building. I need a motion and a second to take up Resolution 25-R-2A, please.
Motion. Second.
Got a motion and a second? And we have Mr. Sully here this evening. Mystery surprise.
Good evening, Michael Sully, IT manager. So with the building of the new administration building next door, we need to equip it to move people into it. We have three different phases of it we're looking at right now. One is an immediate requirement to get moved in, our networking equipment, wireless, door access, security systems, cameras, the conference room setups, et cetera. And that's approximately $240,000. The second piece of it is, will be deferable to 2026. It's approximately $23,000. This will include replacement council PCs on the scheduled refresh cycle, some signage for the lobby, and we're gonna determine what's needed for that once it gets built, additional clocks like we have in this room for the building. The third and final phase of it is going to bid for a cellular booster system for this building and the adjacent building to try to improve the lack of cell service we have in here, because this, as you all know, is pretty well non-existent currently. We will also work on getting a emergency radio system into the buildings. That is being worked on through grants right now to see what's available. The bid for the cellular system is in legal review currently. And the final piece to it is the audio/video system for the city council chambers/conference room, like we do in here with streaming, the different setup, the DAS. That is currently out to bid at this moment, and those totals are about $300,000. On the first piece, I forgot to mention, we are working on state contracts and different pieces, so we won't have to bid those parts. So the overall estimate on there is about $564,000 to get all of it done rolling into next year. And I believe Mr. Ford is gonna speak on it as well.
Okay.
Yes, so let me add a little bit of color to this resolution. So you'll recall, city council approved 5.5 million to be spent on the administrative administration building, the structure itself. And we set aside that amount in a restricted account, and we've been funding the construction draws to Crossland out of that account. At the same time that city council approved the construction of the administration building and that budget, I also indicated that the 5.5 million budget did not include IT and it did not include furnishings for that building, and that we would come back to you at a future time and ask for additional funding for those two ancillary support activities, hence the need for IT tonight. To give you, to calibrate you, the general fund has, currently has 5.5 million in unrestricted cash in addition to the 5.5 million we set aside for the building that we've been drawing down over the last six months. We're down to about 3.5 million dollars today that's remaining in that restricted account. But in addition to the building money, which is 100% paid for, we have 5.5 million dollars of unrestricted cash sitting on the balance sheet of the general fund. That specifically is made up of, the lion's share is just 5.2 million dollars of unrestricted funding, and then $320,000 from those recent real estate sales that we've come to you and explained to you a lot, and then also the building behind the old 213 on Walnut. And so then, I would, just to kinda calibrate you, we won't submit a formal budget amendment to council until August, but preliminary work on that amendment indicates that, one, we have quite a bit of savings from vacant positions on the personnel side. So even if we were to see, as part of the budget amendment, we would see additional operating cost needs. We have over a half a million dollars of cost savings expected on the compensation and benefit side. Additionally, tax revenue and utility billing revenue are pretty much in line to meet budget for this year. So we've got strong revenue, expenses will not exceed budget, and we have 5.5 million dollars of surplus cash sitting on the balance sheet of the general fund, so we can fund the incremental ancillary need for IT as well as furniture. We're not asking for furniture tonight, but we'll come back to you at some future point, and staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Thank you, Mr. Sully. Do we have any questions, comments from city council? Mr. Gurkey.
So to clarify, approvals for the 564,500 total estimated costs?
Total estimated costs, yes.
And then, future projects to be bid out, and then, I know you touched on it briefly, but the 241,300 that has been bid out, or how do we get to that pricing, I guess?
So the $241,000, we've been working with vendors we have in the past, and they're on state contracts, and that is the budgetary estimates they gave me.
And then, so then, on the future bid to be bid, does that come back in and get approved again? If it's under 300,000, does it not get, come back before us, or how's that work on the bid?
If it's under 300,000, we would not come back. If you approve the total amount tonight, that's what we're gonna operate under.
And then, broad question too, this furniture, any other expenses we're expecting with, and I know we've outlined those before that these were coming, but any other things that we're expecting for budget changes?
Not at this time.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you.
Any additional questions, comments, concern from city council? Seeing that there is none, thank you, Mr. Sully, and thank you, Mr. Ford, both, this evening. As this is a resolution, we can call this immediately to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
All of those opposed? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries 800. Moving on to reports from staff, Ms. Addington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I hope everyone had a great Fourth of July. We haven't met since Have a Blast, so I wanted to give some numbers there. We had 20,000 in attendance. It was actually down from last year, but those of us that were there, we thought for sure we far exceeded last year. So it was still great to see everybody at the event. Parks Department, fantastic job, as always. I still don't know how you put that on. To the volunteers, public safety, fire, police, you guys are all awesome. So it doesn't happen without everyone contributing. So I hope everyone had a good time. And Mud Run, just to give you, just a shameless plug there, Chris. Mud Run is August 23rd. That announcement just came out as well. One thing that we are starting to do as kind of a leadership team, Josh Jones actually has kinda put this underway, we are rolling out what we call a project status reporting. And so this is to track kind of our bigger projects, the projects that are gonna be long-term projects, that we're gonna have multiple resources, and that will be available online. We're gonna update it weekly, and then council will receive a link as well. But it'll just help you track certain projects, because I know you hear about them, and then sometimes it's months, and you're, you know, this'll kind of keep that progress going for you. So anyway, that's a new tool that will be coming out shortly. Wanted to mention the paving and overlay projects. The city's paving and overlay project has been going, ongoing this past week and a half with proposed completion pending weather within the week. Completed overlays include North Alexander, Lynn Avenue, Miller Road, and East Harrison. Pending overlays include Farm Road 156, Kansas Avenue, and several other local streets. Upon completion of the paving work, striping will likely extend into next week. Update on the Commercial Avenue Street Widening Project. This is planned to complete paving for the Commercial Avenue widening on July 15th, 2026, which is today. There are still a few construction activities that remain, such as striping of pavement, seating, and final cleanup for the project. Expected completion will be ahead of schedule and prior to the opening of the intermediate school year, which is August. And then iron grain lane paving, APAC has completed the work. The road is now open. And then the Schuler Creek Trail. We are aware of several issues on the trail. We're new grass. We're damaged in the most recent storm events. Staff is aware, and they are working with contractor and our public works crews to address those issues. Megan, we're gonna miss you. This is Megan's last council meeting. She will be in touch. She's promised. So we appreciate all she's done since December 2021, I believe. So she's been with us a while, and we will miss her. And then last but not, certainly not least, wanted to give an update on the city administrator process. I know a lot of people have been wondering. But in two weeks, we start the screening process for those which will be screening interviews. So we're actually scheduling interviews with the top candidates. Hopefully, we will just kinda take it as it goes. You can never really time these things and have an official start date for anyone, but we will be starting the official interview process in two weeks. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Addington. Do we have any reports from city council? Mr. O'Neill.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to bring up the Republic Historical Society is having a fundraiser next Saturday, the 26th, over at the high school, 6:30 PM. They would love for as many people to show up as possible, but Terry was telling me that she would really like city council especially to be there, just as kind of a show of support. That's trying to raise money for the building that they wanna build down on Main Street as part of that whole revitalization program and everything, so.
Awesome. Thank you very much. And I may have called you Mr. O'Neill, so my apologies.
You've done it a few times. It's all right.
Thank you, Mr. Neil. Any other reports from city council? I'm part Irish, so. So, moving on to reports from the ma, no other reports from city council? Moving on to reports from the mayor, yeah, I would like to extend, super happy, great big thanks for Have a Blast last week. I know everyone I was around, we had a lot of fun. I saw a lot of people having fun. People were dancing. It's just kinda one of those small-town moments that really, just really hits home, really makes you remember why, at least why I'm up here, when I get to go down there and see everyone having so much fun and seeing staff doing such a wonderful job. All of the options for everyone. I mean, the food smelt delicious. There's just so many different things going on that night that were just incredible. So, yeah, thankful for everyone, all Parks and Recs Department, all of our first responders that kept everyone safe last, that night. I know it wasn't as hot, but it was still, it was a lot of people. 20,000 people is a lot of people. That's when our population doubles in the night, but, yeah. But, yeah, very thankful for all the volunteers that came out and made that effort as well. So those are a lot of great memories, and a lot of great memories that are gonna last for a lifetime, especially for me. I don't know about everyone, but it was special, very special to me. The Green County Mayor's Association, we fired back up last week. We began to meet. There are a number of new members since the last April election, so it was great to get caught up with all of the new members around us in all of Green County. So there's several of them. We had a great evening, a lot of great discussion, and doing a lot of great work to better serve our communities. So the Chamber of Commerce meeting was last week, too. So I appreciate that opportunity in getting down to the Chamber of Commerce and getting to share with them some of the things that we're doing here. And it gets even better when I'm at the Chamber of Commerce and Republic School District is talking. Dr. Pierce is talking, and he's bragging about the great job that the City of Republic does, and all of the great work that's gone into, I know with them opening up their new intermediate school, there's been a lot of work that the city has done on their behalf. And so, and even in particular, Ms. Haynes got a shout out during the meeting from Dr. Pierce, and thanking you very much for all of your hard work. And so, that really means a lot to me as well, and those are, those are the special moments for me as mayor. So thank you. Great work on everything down there as well. So thank you very much. Ozark's Transportation Organization Board of Directors meeting is this Thursday, July the 17th at noon. Mr. Neil had mentioned the Historic Society raising the funds, and so, yeah, I plan to be there as well. And so, you know, they're raising funds to try to build that new Historic Society and Event Center and so on our historic main. And so hopefully, I get to see a few people there. We may have to get a quorum on that one, but, but, yeah, definitely anyone that can make it, I know they love the support, and so, thank you very much. Doing the right thing, for the right time, for the right reasons. And so, we're gonna have a short break tonight for just a couple minutes. We have an executive session this evening, and so I'm asking for council to do what we need to be prepared to go into an executive session. With that, that is all that I have, except for moving into executive session. No further action other than announcing a adjournment. for moving into executive session. No further action other than announcing adjournment by the mayor shall take place after an executive session that is scheduled as the last matter on the agenda unless otherwise stated on the agenda or is allowed per RSMO 610.021. Tonight, we will be going into closed session under RSMO 610.021.3, hiring, firing, promotion, or disciplining personnel. Closed session, closed vote, closed record. RSMO 610.021.12, documents related to a negotiated contract until a contract is executed or all proposals are rejected. Closed session, closed vote, closed record. And RSMO 610.021.13, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applicants or employment. Closed session, closed vote, closed record. I now need a motion and a second to go into closed session.
Motion. Second.
I've got a motion and a second. We're now going to take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Fields.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Gurkey.
Aye.
Councilmember Updike.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Neal.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson.
Aye.
Motion carries eight-zero-zero. This meeting is adjourned.